Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, April the 4th, 2022. The time is now 6:00 P. M. The regular meeting of the city council of the city of Trinidad will now come to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Mr. President, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Devono?
Here.
Criego?
Here.
Ogoltry?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman? Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. If council, if anybody in council have any changes that they would like to make? Entertain the motion?
Second.
Second? Okay, first and the second. Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item three, policy items and our staff reports. Mr. Ruger, do you have anything to report?
Mayor, nothing tonight.
Okay. Item four, petitions or communications. All were written. Do you have anybody signed up?
Yes.
Now, two people, Mr. Hallid.
Good stuff, fun stuff. Tibbetts runs a best of the best contest. We've done it since COVID. This year, we had over 5,000 people vote. We had to remove about 1,200 because they didn't live in the area, but we had voters from New York and Alaska, wherever. We stretched all the way and had winners all in Cimarron Land, in Angel Fire, and so the city won two awards. And there's two things that the folks really, really love. The best, the place to impress out-of-towners is Simpson's Rest, the Trinidad sign. It's one of the things when folks come. And a lot of times when people vote, they actually leave comments, too. Some of them are, I can't share. Some, I can. But so I'm going to present this to you.
All right.
This is the edition that all, everybody was revealed in. Also, there's a window decal and a wall mount kind of certificate that we use. We had hundreds of businesses throughout the area nominated. He was in a tight, tight race himself. So it's just, it's just a lot of fun. It just celebrates local businesses and it's part of our little economic development thing. The other award is for municipal park, playground or municipal park, and Central Park won that. There was some, there was some comments on this, and it had to do more with children's playground areas at the parks. Okay, so that was, some of these times I could see some of the things that seemed to be just a footnote. It'd be a little better if the, maybe someone were in disrepair or single, danger prone or whatever. So, but I just wanted to provide you with those and congratulations. It's a, it's a fun time.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may just make a quick comment, I just want to let everyone know we've engaged, I think you all know this, but the University of Colorado Denver to do a redesign of Simpson's Rest. Just got an email literally right before this council meeting from their staff saying that they're on it and hope to get us some design rendering sometime soon. So that's an area we've identified for beautification as well.
Nice. Thank you. Si, Michaels?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, 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 here I start, Eli and Frank and everyone. Thank you so much for all that you do for being here because with all the moving and taking we got going on in town, we need leaders like you to carry us through. So I was thinking twice tonight, once on the ordinance later on because I read it and I think it's, it's good, but we'll talk about that then. But my purpose right now is just talking about economic development in the downtown area for this summer that we are all concerned with. For those that you go in and outside our businesses downtown, they are passionately hurting. We have so many businesses now, which we are so grateful for, but that also spreads the tourism money of disposable income for guests going in our town. So we need more bells and whistles. So one of the things we talked about through tourism, four months now actually, and I wanted to bring to your attention, I talked to the mayor about it a few times, is if you go down any of the county roads in the summertime, we have beautiful roads filled with sunflowers on both sides, and people randomly have sunflowers. Carol, Carolyn Main Street has sunflowers growing up on her sidewalks, and we have so many beautiful sunflowers around. Is that we don't have a city flower. And if we could name sunflowers as a city flower and as a tourism thing, pack out, send out bags or have bags of sunflowers in pots outside your door, you could have, we could have sunflower days from July 15th through September 15th in town. And that could do a whole lot of other events with very little bang for your buck. And they grow so, so, so big and strong here. I really, I really ask the city to really consider doing a flower for our city. Many cities have a flower. We don't have it the sunflower city, and that would add to already what's already out there. We don't even have to try very hard, and people could get an enjoyment of sunflowers. And what do sunflowers stand for? They stand for friendliness and smiles and happiness. And how many people want to be a sunflower, right? And what is Trinidad? Have we been known as the most loving community, as the most loving community? So a sunflower on that is, is just the most wonderful, I think, flower that we could have. So please take that seriously. If we could have it named by May, we could really do, even of us, all our private businesses, we could put sunflowers on our stationery and do some other fun stuff with that. So please, it's already an asset we have, like so many other things. The second thing that I really wanted to talk about tonight was, is the trolley itself and the way it drives around town. So many times the trolley, if you go to the Welcome Center, they'll tell you either to stand at the Welcome Center, which there are not very many parking lots. That's the biggest problem with the Welcome Center. They'll tell you to come to City Hall. But still on that thing, we are not, you know, we've all talked about the Transportation Center and if it's going to happen or not going to happen, but we've got this pad of dirt right in our downtown area. And for, we're looking at major events, we got over 175 parking places that could park down there, take the trolley, make it up here, right on Animus Street, go right down Main Street, all the way to the New Mickey's, down, come around on Commercial Street and go back. And people could get used to parking there when we have events. If you have an event at, at Central Park, you're parking up the same distance. You're parking a block or two or three blocks away. So it makes it easy. But what makes it even better then is people feel like it's safe because it's in a big area. So they could walk up Animus or walk up Fast Food Row and come around here and visit all the shops downtown. And if we could start using that pad of dirt as a really, an excellent way, there's parking spaces there. They're, they're painted out, and whenever there's events downtown, it's like, where do they park? It's a great park place for them to park. So please take that in consideration for the summer and for the trolley tours. Instead of saying go to City, City, we could have a place where the bus pulls in where it is covered. So it's already covered because of the highway. So it could be covered, rain, sun, heat, snow. It's already there. Let's start using it. We could do something very easy there for the trolley pickup. People could say our cars are there and start really making those tourists that come into Trinidad go in a circle around Trinidad and sprinkle all that around.
One minute, ma'am. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Okay, wouldn't, oh, you're so. Sorry, sorry. That is a long.
How can I disagree?
That is a long.
Sorry.
And then the last thing is that we desperately, desperately for economic development, need a trail from downtown. We've had the fights of all the different ways we're going to do it, but we could do it right now. We could have a trail right now that starts at the corner of Main and Commercial, goes straight up Main Street, straight up Santa Fe Trail and do it for the summer. We could call it Rico Trail in honor of what the mayor has done. We could do whatever you want, but right downtown, and we could do that right now. All it takes is a sign. So. Please, please, as we redo this tourism ordinance, consider those three items before the summer happens. We need it for economic development. I challenge you, go, all of you, to go to five businesses and ask them how they're doing. We desperately need it. It's a call out for the downtown businesses. And I love you all for working hard.
Thank you. You're doing something to make Frank smile. Okay, on to item five, our consent agenda, agenda. Item A, approval of the regular meeting minutes on March 21, 2023. Item B, approval of the special event permit, malt, vinous and spirituous application filed by a benevolent and protective order of the Elks at 120 South Maple Street for April the 15th, 2023. Do we have a representative here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for being here. Appreciate you being here. Item C, approval of the bills for $1,896,820.53. Item D, approval of the payroll, April 1, 2023, through April the 14th, 2023, in amount of $439,334.59. Entertain the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, first and second?
Yes.
Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes, except for I abstain from item 5A. I was not present at that meeting.
Ogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
On to item six, public hearings. New hotel and restaurant liquor license application filed by Allmax LLC. Doing business as Allmax Kitchen at 443 North Commercial Street. Hearing is now open. Do we have Alex Turner or Ms. Hannah Ricio here? Here's that vote.
Good evening.
Good evening. Turn it over to Mr. Downs.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Mayor, would you swing a little, please?
Let me turn, let me raise your hand. Do you swear in the testimony? The testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and the proof of the truth.
I dare.
Thank you. Good evening. So Mr. Turner and Ms. Ricio?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. I asked before. That's how I knew how to pronounce it. The two of you, you were here tonight representing Allmax LLC, is that correct?
Correct.
Doing business as Allmax Kitchen?
Correct.
443 East Commercial Street?
North.
North. Sorry, I have east, but North Commercial Street. Okay, thank you. And this is a hotel and restaurant liquor license application, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And are you currently in business as a restaurant?
Yes.
Okay. And how long have you been in business?
Would be so.
At this location?
At this location, since the beginning of the year.
Okay. And how long have you been in business in Trinidad?
Two years prior to that.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you. So Allmax is a Colorado limited liability company, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if you know, it was formed and registered on August 18th of 2020?
Correct.
Okay. And it's an LLC made up of the two of you being equal owners, correct? You're each 50% owners?
Uh huh.
Okay. I am sorry, you have yes or no if you want to.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And the ownership of the establishment, you consider that to be owned 50/50 as well?
Yes.
Okay, good. And so you both, I want to ask you as we begin, have either of you ever owned a liquor license before?
No.
Okay, I know on your background checks, you each indicate that you have worked in the liquor industry before. And will you tell us what that experience is, please? Mr. Turner, you first. You are a chef, right?
Yes. So I mean, it's been, you know, not heavily involved in running the bar, but ordering liquor, managing that, you know, or, you know, anything involved in keeping that safe and, you know, stopped and anything along those lines in that sense.
Okay. And you both hail from Rhode Island, right?
Yes.
And your, your prior work experience in the, I think, the bar and restaurant industry stems from Rhode Island?
Yes.
Okay. And Ms. Ricio, you have experience also, I believe, also in Rhode Island in like serving and perhaps preparing alcohol?
Yes, so I've been behind a bar for quite a bit of time and also have done backup support as well. So there's a good translation of both of those kind of components in the restaurant. There's a good flow of those things. I think they're both very important, especially when you make things from scratch. The kitchen needs to help you out sometimes.
Good point, good point.
Yeah.
So, but neither of you have ever owned a liquor license, is that correct? Okay. You understand that if you're approved for a liquor license, you, you're responsible for the, the conduct of liquor sales, right?
All liability, that.
Exactly, exactly. And any violations, and you guys could lose your liquor license. You understand that?
Correct.
Okay, as I was asking you earlier, Mr. Turner, well, first of all, how many employees do you plan on having? Do you have?
At the moment, we have six, including both of us.
Okay. And are you going to make sure that all of your employees are tips trained?
Anybody, yeah, anybody from the front of the house that will be touching alcohol, that's by the gal that he has to do, so.
Okay. And you understand that you have to, you have to have a knowledge and familiarity with not only the Colorado liquor code, but the Trinidad liquor code as well, right? And you understand you have to card everybody, you have to make sure that you're not going to serve to visibly intoxicated persons?
Yes.
You understand all those things. Okay. So I want to ask you, you both submitted yourselves for background checks. And I know Ms. Ricio, you came back clear. Mr. Turner, you had an entry in yours. And so the record is, is clear, your, your entry was from 2003 and from Rhode Island. It was for possession of marijuana, receiving stolen goods and firing across a highway.
Yes.
All Mr. Mayor's, but would you explain to council what that was about, please?
Sure, all, each one or just the last one?
Um, I thought it was all one case. It's one.
Well, it was all one, yeah, I just so blanked on it. You know, I was a pot smoker. I had a stolen street sign in my house that said Buzzway. So, you know, being the young guy that I was, well, we took that. It was just, and the firing of the Pelagons, it was a Pelagon as it states in the charge there, that unfortunately, I was a young dude, irresponsible, having friends at my house and not paying attention. And someone did shoot a Pelagon out the window, and I being the residence, you know, the VC, when the police came, I was the one who took the heat from that, you know, and that was pretty much it.
Okay. And that's the only entry you have in your criminal history, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Like I said, it was from 2003, so it was 20 years ago, I believe, in, how old were you in 2003?
I was about 19 or 20, right on the cusp.
Okay, okay. But that's the only entry, and those were for Mr. Mayor's, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I want to ask you about your lease agreement, if I could, please. Your landlord is 443, of course, North Commercial Street LLC. Okay, that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And you, of course, is part of your packet, you have a lease agreement in there. You have a three-year lease with an escalating rent amount, correct?
Yes.
Lease was signed in July of 2022?
Yes.
Okay, and you have a number of three-year options to renew the agreement at the end of this lease period, correct? Okay, but your landlord knows that you're applying for a liquor license?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And also, there's a promissory note in your packet. I don't need to go into the details of that, but you have a promissory note also?
Yes.
And that's in the name of the LLC, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So did you, either or both of you, I think it was you, Ms. Ricio, who circulated the petition in support of your application?
Yes.
And you ask Trinidad citizens their position on the liquor license?
Yes, we had a few customers on there that were eager to sign, even though they are outside of limits. So I let them sign just to show support, but yes.
I won't say that that's undue influence. I'm just kidding. And I believe there were 29 valid signatures. But I just want to ask you, and I touched on this before, but you understand that if you're approved, you are assumed to have a knowledge of the Colorado and Trinidad liquor codes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you understand no violations, right?
Yes.
You understand that if you are approved, you have an ongoing obligation to cooperate with all city officials, right? City manager's office, chief of police, fire chief, city attorney. I mean, you need to cooperate with us if we have any requests of you, any reasonable requests of you as you're going forward. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. So I want to just give you an opportunity to say anything you want to the, to city council, any, anything you want to say in conclusion. I'm, I'm done with my questions of you, but anything you would like to mention or down?
Say thanks for considering this, and that's really about it.
Okay.
We're very excited to consider to do this. It's going to be.
Happy to grow from the town, find more jobs, all the good stuff.
All of those things, yes. We're, we're super excited to kind of influence the community in a positive way doing this, bringing some new promising things versus your lit, your typical bar scene, you know, doing more high-end cocktails and things like that that will be, you know, limited, but also shareable with your friends and family and be able to come in and enjoy something in the morning, not necessarily have to go out at night and, you know, go to a bar and that you can come in and have a nice meal and a nice mimosa or something like that. So we're very excited. Yeah.
Okay.
I think we have any questions from council? Questions from council? No. Any questions?
I noticed that you're planning a grocery area in there. Are you thinking at that point that you'll expand, try to expand the license to sell liquor there or?
Um, we, we might not, just for the logistics of those things. Are the, the market space is a big focus for us to be able to sell foods prepared by us in there. More of a spotlight on food, not necessarily alcohol. Alcohol is not really a huge part of our life. Food is more a component.
Providing another grocery option.
Alcohol is there to complement the, the service and the meal that you come in to enjoy with us. It's not so much a, a big component for retail for us. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Um, I had a question more for last. The results of the background check are not a violation that would preclude?
Correct. They do not, excuse me, constitute bad moral character.
Correct.
Not felony convictions, and also not convictions of moral perpetuity.
I just wanted to make it.
No, thank you. Good, good.
And I think, you know, years back, we corrected that or made that clear, that the period of time, I think it was like four years or something like that, five years, and I think it's a, it's an issue like this. Anything else?
I have no further questions.
Do you have one question? This is more for us, I guess, as for the city. There were, there were some inspection issues. Have those been corrected?
Yes, they have. The city inspector came by yesterday and all that's all been smoothed out.
And just for the record, what do you, what's your hours and what days are you open and stuff to tell everybody that?
Yeah, we're open from 8:00 to 3:00, and we're closed Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So we call it the extended weekend. But Thursday through Monday, we're open from 8:00 to 3:00, so.
It's on the record now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, would, you know, is the option open for like the summertime to open later for people, dinner people?
So again, with, with us applying for this provides us with financial growth, which will allow us to grow the business in terms of set grocery store direction, eventually a few dinner services, because I really want to get to that because again, that'll build our revenue and thus build the business even more. But yeah, that's, that's on the list of things. Maybe so hopefully by fall.
Within that license, though, because it is a hotel and licensed, alcohol can't be served past 8:00 P. M. So we will try to kind of keep that to be in compliance with that.
Serving anything past 8:00 P. M.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience or someone online wish to speak for or against this approval or the permit? Yes?
Um, I'd like to speak for. If you've not had your biscuits and gravy and eat it. They've been voted two years on the road best breakfast in the area. And for a town to actually be able to entice two so skilled people from Rhode Island to come to this little place in Southern Colorado and serve what they serve, we're all fortunate and blessed, and I'm so glad. So here.
One more lady, you want to come forward?
And that was Pam Howell for the record. I'm not sure that's going to be recorded. That was commented in favor of.
I'm Maria Turner. I've been here in Trinidad for four years. I came from Penbrook, Maine. I love this community. I spend a lot of time in Allmax Kitchen. I talk to a tremendous amount of people that come through this town. I'll sit down, I'll visit with them. I listen to what they have to say and why they're here. And Allmax is becoming a really wonderful meeting place for people here in the community and for people coming through. I have seen them build many businesses. My son has done five businesses. Hannah, I met, and she's a very successful businesswoman, and is just really positive for the community. And I want to thank you all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
The community is very interested in them expanding hours, so if this is the direction that it takes, then.
Nice, nice.
Okay, hearing, no one else to speak. Hearing is now closed. Entertain the motion for the new hotel and restaurant liquor license application filed by Allmax LLC. Doing business as Allmax Kitchen at 443 North Commercial Street. Entertain the motion? So moved. Second? You got to speak up over there.
I did.
Got a second over there?
We definitely have a first.
About a second?
I'll take a second.
Okay, any further discussion? Call vote, please?
Devono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Read the findings, please.
This matter came on for hearing on the application of Allmax LLC, DBA Allmax Kitchen at 443 North Commercial Street in Trinidad, Colorado for a new hotel and restaurant license for the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on April 4th, 2023, in city council chambers and city hall. The city council having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports of the city clerk and other city staff petitions admitted into evidence at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing makes the following findings. One, the neighborhood consists of that area located within the city's corporate limits. Two, Alex Turner and Hannah Ricio testified in favor of granting the license. No other persons testified in favor of or in opposition to granting the license. The city clerk's reports show that there are 44 liquor licensed outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are six fermented malt beverage off-premises licenses, one fermented malt beverage on-premises license, one club license, 14 hotel and restaurant licenses, six liquor store licenses, 10 tavern licenses, one arts license, two beer and wine licenses, and three lodging and entertainment licenses. The applicant submitted petitions regarding the liquor license application. The petitions contain 29 total valid signatures, of which 29 were residents or business representatives from within the neighborhood, 21 years of age or older, in favor of issuance of a liquor license at this location. No remonstrances were submitted. Five, the applicant through testimony and other evidence made prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor license outlets and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Six, based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the city council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor, liquor establishments, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant officers are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of Allmax LLC, DBA Allmax Kitchen at 443 North Commercial Street in Trinidad, Colorado.
How much Turner and Ms. Rico, thank you for investing in the city of Trinidad and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item B, public hearing for consideration of Nordons. Amending the zone classification of property located at blocks nine and 10. Block two, Capitol Hill addition to the city of Trinidad, Colorado from medium density residential to community commercial zoning, 1201 East Main Street. Hearing is now open. Ms. Hall?
Mayor, city council and staff have brought to you the staff report and application from Danae Thomas and Johnny Rivera for a rezone. It's going to be medium, from medium density residential to community commercial. It's going to be medium, from medium-density residential to community commercial. I'm very excited about a proposed business of an e-bike business. And I provided to you a proposed rezone flat in front of you. If you have any questions or need me to point out anything, I'd be happy to do it. There is proposed parking that is on the flat that Mr. Thomas has, or Mr. Rivera has provided, that has sufficient parking, two regular spaces and one ADA compliant space. And they are going to provide, are they plan to provide improvements of sidewalks, curb cuts and parking lot improvements as well. And if there's anything, oh, I did want to add, I did speak to the neighbor that's right next door, the residential neighbor, and he's very excited about the improvement. He said he's improving his own place and he's looking forward to a business next door.
Are either Mr. Rivera or Ms. Thomas here with us tonight?
Unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight. But if you have any questions, I can definitely forward them to them.
Any questions from council?
Hey Chris, so when you're talking about the adjacent house, is that the one, the small white house, is that the one that you're talking about? Because it seems like that was, has been abandoned for a while.
Yes, and he is out of town and he claims that he is going to be here this summer to redevelop that house.
Okay, I just want, I didn't know by the map if that-
It's the house that's touching, touching that property.
These parties would add that to their, no.
Any other questions?
No, no.
Ms. Hall, it seems like there are a lot of things that they needed to do. They got support from the various departments, but are all those things taken care of?
At this time, there are a lot of things they've got to do. If they move any dirt, we'll need drainage reports and they'll have to get that from a certified architect or somebody that can approve the plans to move any kind of dirt around and get a satisfactory drainage report. They also have an application, they need to, they'd like to partake in the sidewalk program, if that's possible, and in turn they'll save some of the money for making the sidewalk improvements that they need, that are necessary. Parking lot is an expense that they need to consider and that would be a considerable improvement. And ADA requirements are kind of tricky, so we would try to help them however we can to satisfy those requirements.
And they understand all of those things?
Yes, we've gone over them.
Okay.
I have no further questions since our last discussion.
An answer to your question earlier about the house next door. And I thought I saw in the fall a little bit of movement on that house. Somebody was in there doing some minor work, so it's good to see that that area is being completed. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against your change? Or is anyone listening in? Hearing none, hearing is now closed. Item B one, second reading of ordinance, amending the zone classification of property located at lots nine and ten. Block two, Capitol Hill addition to the city of Trinidad, Colorado, from medium-density residential to community commercial zoning. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would have preferred that they were here because I think it would have been helpful, but we did get a chance to ask them several questions at the last meeting, so.
Anything else? Hearing none, call, vote please?
Devona?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven, unfinished business. This is a resolution that we talked about last week in special meeting. It was concerning Senate Bill twenty-three dash two thirteen. There's a lot of controversy surrounding this bill because it, concerning zones, zoning of properties, basically what this bill will do is take away our ability to, for zoning changes in the community and this would be across the state. Basically, what they're trying to do is whatever applies to Denver applies to Trinidad, Colorado. And getting a lot of opposition to this. Matter of fact, I have had conversations with some people the last few days. Even one today, I got a call today from, this is interesting, the C C four C A, the Colorado Communities for Climate Action, got a letter from them. They're out of Denver and they're a group that, let you know who they are. There's Adams County, Basalt, Boulder, Eagle County, Durango, Crested Butte, Laramo County, Picken County, and on and on and on. But this is an organization that is very much in opposition to it. And I've also talked to Sarah Blackers from Action Twenty-two. There we know we as an organization are concerned. Had another organization that called me, I can't remember who it was, but they called, they also were very concerned as those of us that were here last week at the special meeting. I think we understood. So at this point in time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mike Beasley, who is our lobbyist, and explain to us what has happened since last Thursday. Mike, would you please fill us in?
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council, can you hear me?
Yes.
You're mayor, right? Let me apologize, we're speaking out to go to my daughter's graduation, so I normally don't do these calls from the airport, so I apologize for that. So since we met last Friday, I had forecasted for you a few things related to support for this bill that did not materialize, and I think it's important to point that out before we get going. And that is interest related to the Colorado Association of Realtors and the Colorado Home Builders Association. The home builders have not yet taken a position and the realtors moved to an amended position. Since we talked on Friday, the bill was supposed to, was rumored to be in committee on Tuesday this afternoon and that didn't materialize and it did appear on the calendar for Thursday for testimony only. And why I tell you that, I think it's important to keep in mind that what I'm seeing in my world, in the hallways of the state legislature, is a lot of, a lot of discussion around this bill. I think it's safe to say this is the most lobbied piece of legislation that's out there and a lot of groups unhappy, very few supporters and a whole lot of folks that want to amend it for a variety of reasons. I mentioned the realtors a minute ago. They want to get into the geographic classification side, for example, and the non-urbanized municipality would be cities instead of five thousand or less, it would be fifteen thousand or less, as an example. There is almost uniform concern and opposition to the use by right contained in this bill. Lot of concerns over the accessory dwelling units, a lot of concerns over lack of clarity of what middle-income housing means. Concern, concern over things like parking and the lack of parking mandates in here because, you know, one size doesn't fit all. And generally speaking, you know, a coalition forming to try and work on those issues and to change this bill from less of the mandates on use by right to one that is more focused on less of a stick and more of a carrot, especially if it relates to planning. Incentive communications between cities and counties, for example, on areas that they can agree on where development should occur, where revenues could be shared under those circumstances. And, you know, again, where development should occur and open spaces that could be preserved with a more of a commitment to address affordable housing. Nothing in that hundred and six-page bill really is a requirement to build affordable housing. And as I mentioned, I think it was last week, you know, the development community really has wanted a lot of these things that are contained in this bill, the mandates on local governments, the structure that a local government can't meet, the requirements of permitting, things like that. That DOLA then would step in with unprecedented role-making. I stopped counting at twenty-four the deadlines that DOLA needs to meet over the next twenty-four months. And it's a huge, huge lift on top of the requirements that they already are trying to meet, managing nearly eight hundred million dollars in federal funds for housing. So I do expect this bill will be in committee on Thursday. I do expect it to continue to be testimony only. And I think that it's important, whatever values that you set forward related to this bill, that we share that with committee. And I'm happy to answer questions about this and anything else I may have forgotten.
Questions from council? Anything else, I know you were here yesterday.
I'm happy, the outcry has been the way that it has been and I hope that some effective changes happen to this bill before or if it's passed. And I think it's important that we make this statement.
You know, I think it's interesting to hear from you that the realtors were in the, you know, to amend. I think it's good to hear and that the contractors association has not taken a position because that was the one, the two worries that I talked to Sarah Blackers, that she had, that she thought that if they jumped on board with the yes, that it would be a done deal almost. But it sounded like that's changed somewhat. You know, my biggest concern is the discussion that we had last week is it takes away the rights of the citizens as far as a referendum. And from what I'm seeing, and we discussed this a little bit, and I've had discussions with some of these other people, because that's, to me, that's almost illegal. It's taking away the right of the people. It's not good. And I think that that's one avenue that I think needs to be stressed more than anything. Because, you know, when you take away the rights of the people, where do we go with this? What's next? It's not good. So I think there's huge legal issues with this bill in that respect. The other thing, have you heard about anything of an option of an opt-in or out? Has there been discussion on that?
That has not been the conversation. I think the conversation, mayor, has been more centered on, not an opt-in or opt-out, but more on why don't you incent us, use the fifteen or twenty million dollars that's set aside to implement this bill and promote more planning, more conversation, again, like I mentioned, on, even on a regional basis. And that's really been the focus.
I do know that you said, you mentioned that they were taking testimony only on Thursday and I'm sure there's going to be a heck of a lot of people going there to testify. I wouldn't doubt that there'd be three, four hundred people there, but they'll only allow so many people, I think. If I'm correct, they usually cut it off at what, two hundred?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think it'll be at least that much and I don't think they'll cut it off. I think they'll have to take the testimony, they might limit individuals to two minutes. But it's just really, really important and I want to, you know, I don't, you know, the, that, you mentioned that C C four C A and that's elected official Colorado Communities for Climate Action, which really is city council and commissioners from across Colorado. And I want to, I think this is a good summary of, and they did a nice job, of kind of the process around this bill. They talk about the bill's weakness reflects the process in which the bill was crafted. Local governments' concerns were largely ignored and many individual local officials expressed support for the bill and advancements introduction were dismayed to discover the bill is essentially a stick and no carrot, which is quite different from how they felt the administration had described and pitched them on the bill. It's especially noteworthy that their members, local governments across the state are deeply committed to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and yet the goals aligned in this legislation could not be more productive partners in crafting it. And they have serious, this bill has serious pitfalls. Those are, I think they did a nice job, that is, these elected officials, I would consider center-left, many on the political spectrum, and I think it underscores kind of, every corner of the state has concerns in what really is one of the most significant land use bill that I've seen since the mid nineteen seventies. And so I think we go in and we tell exactly how you feel and for the provisions of this bill that don't affect you, you know, you're concerned about, well, maybe you're next, you know, as they plan. The other thing that I mentioned to you on Friday that's kind of circulated up is this concern over water. And when you look at the A T U mandate, several districts, water districts, not necessarily municipality, have come in and said, look, if we have a mandate in places like Aurora or Eagle County, for example, I think the Eagle County Water Authority, the district that's up there, has estimated a three hundred million dollar impact to taxpayers on the A T U and meeting that additional infill infrastructure. And I think those are the kind of things that just were not considered when the administration crafted this bill. So I really hope that you will come in and be very clear about your concerns and the voices that you're representing and I do believe we'll see major changes to the bill after that event. But as I said to you on Friday, I'd hope to come in and say, look, here's a list of amendments. But for the proponents of this bill, the opposition is growing and the concerns are growing and they're having a hard time keeping up with that and so haven't been able to produce any amendments to alleviate those concerns.
I just wanted to read this, just for those listening in, and this is, I was talking about the referendum. And this is the way it reads. It says, "Section twenty-one includes a safety clause preventing voters from exercising the right of referendum. Local zoning ordinances on the same issues covered by the bill are subject to the reserved constitutional power of referendum." So that's what basically it reads. Now, we have two items tonight that, one is a, to sign on to a, something that C M L has asked us to sign on, which we will forward that, it goes directly immediately. And the second one is our resolution that we are looking at tonight. How do we get that in the hands of the committee?
Mayor, we will share that both with the municipal league and then we will deliver it to the committee as well in addition. And that will supplement any testimony. If you all choose to decide, if you decide to testify, it'll supplement your testimony. We'll also share it with, I meant with, oh gosh, at least a dozen counties that have their own individual lobbyists and they're going to be doing the same thing. They're going to be supplementing their verbal testimony with written materials.
Now, if we decide to testify remotely, like I said, I've testified in person but never remotely. If I decide to do that-
It's an easy process and we can definitely help you connect in that way.
Do you know what time testimony will begin?
They're going to start at mid-morning, so I'm going to say around ten or ten thirty on Thursday morning.
So it could be a long day in other words.
It could be a long day. You're definitely going to want to do some reading or bring a book, whether you're online at your desk or in the legislature. We've connected, I've provided a contact for Steve to help get you signed up if you all choose to do that.
Okay, good. Okay, any other comments? Well, entertain a motion for the resolution in opposing Senate Bill twenty-three dash two thirteen.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Call, vote, please?
Devona?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you, thank you very much, Mike, for the information.
Thank you. Did you want to cover one sixty-six or twelve fifty-five?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and give us some information on that? We don't have that down, but I think that maybe it'd probably be a good idea to hear.
Will that fit under the agenda?
Should we, should we, it's not on our agenda, should we?
Yeah, maybe, maybe we shouldn't.
Okay, we're going to pass on that because it's not on our agenda, Mike?
Okay.
Sorry.
We'll be rest as much tomorrow when we get caught up, so. Thank you all, thank you all for your time and allowing me to call in and we will talk tomorrow.
Okay.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Item eight, miscellaneous business. Item eight A, first readings and ordinance, review and replacing. Chapter seven, Article seven, lodging tax of the Trinidad Municipal Code and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance at six P M. on April the eighteenth, twenty- a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance at 6:00 PM on April the 18th, 2023. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Ruger, what's your?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to highlight since the work session, a couple of changes and then one I missed in the summary. So one of the questions that came up at the work session was the provision that exempted facilities with three or less rooms. We did do some research on that. That was carrier language from a community we borrowed, so we removed that language. So it would be applicable to particularly Airbnbs, VRBOs, those types of things. So that was removed. We amended section 7-46-2B to include expenses, it spoke specifically to personnel, but in talking with Marty Hackett, we wanted to make sure we had provisions to pay for copying expenses, print publications, that type of thing as well. So we want to make sure the funds available for ancillary costs, not just personnel administering these functions. And then one of the things that we did discuss at the work session as well was what happens with the current year's budget. So we added a provision that says the approved budget for this fiscal year stands in place. However, you all certainly have the discretion to amend that budget, just like you would any other funding source that the city receives. And then lastly, just looking at what we're tasking the advisory board to do, it spoke to making recommendations to you on the lodging tax funding in general, but we wanted to broaden that a little bit, so we added a provision that said the board may also advise on other policy-related matters related to tourism as requested from you all from time to time. So we want to make sure that that board has the full authority to advise you on matters that are not necessarily just funding-related tourism in general. And then there was one other change on the provision that we have for funding recreation facilities. I did remove the word outdoor, and I think that's a very important distinction. It speaks to recreation facilities in general, and we don't want to limit it to just outdoor. So that could include indoor recreation facilities, even potentially things that we deem that might be recreation-related otherwise. So it gives a little bit more flexibility on administering that portion of the funding. So just wanted to point those things out, and I do believe we have at least one person, if not more, to speak on this item here.
Okay, just for information for the audience, what this is, is concerning the tourism, tourism board and the current 3% tax on rentals, it's just a change. We felt it used to be a little broader in the way it is right now. Mr. Downs, do you have anything you need to add?
I really don't, Mayor. I, you know, we discussed this at the work session. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have, but I really, I think it's appropriate and for the reasons already discussed, I think it's a good change.
And Mayor, I apologize. One last comment. I just want to make a distinction because it did come up at the work session. There has been discussions, really precipitated from the council retreat we had in February about a potential proposal to increase lodging tax. I just want to make the distinction, this is separate from that. So this is not predicated on that increase. This has nothing really to do with that. This is a totally separate ordinance, separate issue, and we'll have future discussions on the potential of that increase in the next several months.
You said we had a couple of people that are, who want to speak tonight, however, this is more of just a first reading and ordinance.
And I'll yield to Agar on first reading. I just noticed some...
In this respect, wouldn't that be better for them to appear when we have the hearing?
At the public hearing, yeah.
That's correct.
Thank you, Les.
That's correct.
I think that we just eliminate that, and those of you that wanted to speak tonight, if you would come on April the 18th, you were able to speak at that point in time concerning the ordinance change. Okay. Any questions from council?
I have a couple. I like the changes that you made since we talked about it at work session. When we have 10% to support art and cultural events, programs, and facilities, and I'm just wanting, I'm curious, what is that intended to cover? What is that 10%? What's permissive for us to cover?
Sure. I mean, it's broad enough that it could be continuing the tradition of grants for local festivals, that type of thing. It could be to support a museum. It could be for anything that's related to art and culture. And specifically in that, we included the word facilities as well. So it could even be to support potentially the Mitchell Museum if they had a need for a facility upgrade, and we thought there was a good partnership there with the city. That would be a good example. But we want to keep that broad, so the council has full discretion on how you would spend that 10%.
Okay. I'm wondering if 10% is enough for all of those things? If the current budget is 500,000 is what the tax is, and that would only be 50?
50, yeah.
So I'm not sure, I'm wondering if we should think about bumping that up a little bit? That was one of the concerns that I had. And then when, if this passes, when will city council be seating an advisory board?
Absolutely. So the ordinance will be passed the second, assuming you pass the first reading tonight, we'll bring it back for second reading, the second meeting in April, and then it would go into effect 10 days thereafter. So we would probably target the next work session at that point. So what I would like to see happen is if you all pass on first reading tonight, I don't feel like there's any reason to delay soliciting applications for new board members, and we can get that going as quickly as possible. I think it's really important that that board, it establishes as quickly as possible so you all and we all can begin working with them and making good things happen for our community.
Yeah, I think that'd probably be a good idea, yeah.
That's all.
Questions? Under the current arrangement for the tourism board, how much money is earmarked to support arts and cultural events, programs, and facilities in the current?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Williamson, the current ordinance only says that money shall be spent on marketing and advertising. It's very clear in there that that money is 100% earmarked for marketing and advertising the community. So as it stands now, for supporting arts and cultural events in the community, it would be, I think through the current grant process, the tourism board has established in helping marketing events and advertising those events so that they get more participation. But as far as direct funding support to those events, the current ordinance doesn't contemplate that at all.
So I just would make the observation, it's 10% higher than it's been in the past. I mean, that's just a general observation.
I mean, I really could comment on it. I talked to several tourism board members last week, and we were talking about the revenues. And the reason I asked is because I was on the original tourism board. We started with $25,000, but we talked about that half million that's in that fund. And I was cautioned to be careful how we spend that money because the bulk of that money was set aside during COVID. There was no expenditures evidently. So to your answer, your question, I think if we're changing this machine, we should see how it operates for a year and then maybe make some changes after, because this is unusual circumstances. And at the rate things are going, you know, with inflation and other factors, I think maybe it would be wise for us to be more conservative because, and this tourism season might tell the tale. Because Si mentioned something about businesses downtown. I check all the time, and it is not good. I mean, sales are down.
One thing that's good is that this is just based on percentages. So in terms of being conservative, we're not, you know, we can't spend anything other than what's there anyways. So I'm just wondering if 10% is enough to assist in the support of festivals that bring people here.
And Mayor, and members of the council, certainly you have the authority to amend those percentages. That's totally under your prerogative.
Right.
But I do want to point out, there is 5% also that's allocated discretionary, basically, that could fall into any of the proposed uses as well. So up to 15% really could go to arts and cultural events as it currently is drafted.
I don't think that's the only revenue stream that they would have.
I don't either. But we do, what I do think that continue bringing people here to support that level down.
Oh, that's 5% plus the 5. I think that's reasonable.
I just wanted to ask as well, more of a matter of public record, in order to change, if it went through the second reading as is, in order to change the percentages, is just an ordinance change? So it would just be first and second reading in that case as well, correct?
Absolutely. Council always has the authority to amend the ordinance at a future date, but yes, it would be the normal ordinance process for a second reading, effecting 10 days thereafter.
The only other thing I wanted to say is I'm sure all of us across here are, it's our sincere hope and desire that we try and grow the number of people through Trinidad to help our small businesses succeed. I mean, that's what makes Trinidad Trinidad, so it's super, super important that we get that done, and we all want to, so we're working towards that. I have no further questions.
Okay. You know, I think what's interesting, it was mentioned earlier, and we continue to work on the assets of Trinidad, and like it was mentioned about Simpson's Rest.
Yeah.
And I think if we continue to do that and add to the assets, I think it would just allow for more people to want to stop and stay in Trinidad. So that's basically my comment. So, is there any other comments? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Oldtree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. On item nine, council reports. The only thing I have from the veterans is the Fort Worth Colonel Tournament that went last weekend, last Saturday. The fundraiser, Catholic Williams statue. All right, good turnout. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
That's it? That's it. I met with a couple of citizens that have young people, children, grade school kids, and they were asking me two questions regarding recreation in Trinidad. They wanted to know about the condition of the playgrounds in the parks. Have we, are we doing anything? Is there anything in the works to repair or replace those jungle gyms and things like that?
Mayor, council, so one of the biggest issues we have right now is with slides. We've had some vandalism on some of the slides, and first of all, they're extremely expensive. So identifying the funding to replace those is challenging, but they're also on a waitlist. So you'll notice over at Chaminot Park, for example, climber over there, there's been a particle board over one of the slide holes for a while now, and that's just because we can't acquire the slides. But in general, I think tying back to the tourism or the lodging tax ordinance issued approved, those are the types of things we're hoping to really get to, having that dedicated funding source for maintenance and having, you know, some ability to improve our park facilities in general.
Okay. That's one question I was asked. Second question I was asked regarding an indoor swimming pool. I wish Si wouldn't have left because I heard that the new hotel is going to be open to the public for an indoor pool. But the parents brought up a really good point to me, and I said, you know, we did the, we did our due diligence, we checked how much it would cost, how much it would maintain, how much to maintain this, and they said, well, I don't think you garner any revenue from any other recreational area in Trinidad, which is true. So I'm just, you know, it's kind of bothered me for many years because that was the top priority of the citizens years ago, and I don't know if there's some way, somehow we can correct that.
Yeah.
I don't know. I would like, maybe if we had the possibility of doing more research on costs, maybe grants that could happen, because I've been told there's a lot of people that drive from Trinidad to Rattone, and I don't know, but it begs the question, and it was my responsibility to ask.
Appreciate you asking. Just for everyone's knowledge, we did do an assessment of the outdoor pool that we have at the community center in looking at covering that. It's just really not feasible.
Right.
It would be more money than it's worth. In general, aquatic centers, for every city that I've ever been around, they operate at a loss. It's never going to fund itself or make a revenue source. So we have to be prepared for that fiscal impact, certainly. And then, of course, identifying the funding mechanisms and the ways that we can develop a facility of that stature, identifying land, those types of things. However, I don't want to dismiss that staff recognizes this as a top priority as well, and so this is something that we are, have top of radar, and we're looking into all options that we can do to make this happen for our community.
Okay, thank you. And one more thing, this is a good thing. So at the animal shelter, we have had issues with that telephone system down there for over a year. And so the board has actually operated that shelter. We now have an interim ED that's doing a great job for us. So I called James Worthing and Blaine Gutierrez, who are the IT people for the city, and I said, can you go look at the wiring in that building? I mean, it's the city building. Check and see, there's got to be an issue with that wiring that's causing it. Because people were complaining that they were calling and nobody was answering the phone. So Blaine and James went and inspected, and they were very knowledgeable. It's amazing. They're very knowledgeable about IT. And he said, it's not the wiring in the building, it's the equipment that the wiring attaches to. He said that we found the problem, and that's the good news. The bad news is the city can't pay for it because it's property of the animal shelter. So the animal shelter, by donations from a supporter, bought the equipment, and Blaine and James went on their lunch hours and their time off and donated their free time to repair them. So, long story short, I want to thank these two young men for doing that for us. You know, it was, it's a God scent because now we have access to those phones. But I just wanted to publicly acknowledge what they've done.
Good. Right, Kathy?
I'm dead.
You're sure?
I'm...
That was a long story, I'm sure.
It was.
You know, I don't have any report, but, you know, we're getting a lot of people commenting on, you know, doing recreation and all that and everything else, but, you know, that's important, but it's also important that we have something for people to come to in the town. And I think we should look into our economic development and have Wally in here, and let's get a report from him. He hasn't been here for a long time. Find out what's going on to try to bring some businesses here, some kind of industry, something where we have jobs available. We've done a lot of money spent on housing and bringing people here. If we're bringing them here and they don't have any jobs, they're not going to come. So, and, you know, I hate to say it, we're not making any sales tax on people walking up a trail. Where we're going to get sales tax from is people walk up the trail and come and stay here and buy the businesses and that. And that's what we need to do to generate our revenue, is to get something for attractive. And maybe there's some way we can generate some revenue to help some of our businesses. You know, we did it for housing and that, so I'm sure we could work something out to get something of that going. You know, we don't want to put all our eggs and baskets in tourism like we did before. We need to have something else that's reliable for our community. And I think we really need to work on getting some economical development here, some kind of businesses and stuff, because, like I say, we need restaurants, we need stores, we need stuff that people are going to spend. I mean, if you come here and walk on a trail and leave, we're not getting anything for that. And the trails and the recreation is great, but we also need the other stuff to go with it. And I would like that, maybe at a work session, just a separate work session to just work on all that. We've got enough people here with good ideas, and we could definitely think something up and help our economy.
I think I agree with you that that's a focus that we need to do, and I'm encouraged that we're working on a city plan, that that's one of the things that we're going to be looking at, is where are areas where businesses could locate and whether or not we should put infrastructure in to make that easier. I think those are things that are coming up, so I think we are working on that. There were no meetings that I attended that were order commissioned, none happened. I did get to go to Arctic's Bowl-a-thon, which was very fun, it always is, and it just is amazing to... And it just is amazing to me, the people in this community who focus in on one thing or another, and they put their time and effort into putting on those kind of events, and they're amazing and fun. So if you haven't had a chance to get up to that, do that. And I'm very excited, and the triggers are always coming.
Did you want to report on the SBA meeting, or Steve, do you want to report on that? Did you guys attend that meeting with SBA?
We did, yeah. Yeah, I'll yield to the council member, or if you want me to report on that.
Either one. You... I think you were going to... go ahead.
Okay.
Let him.
I don't have a report so much, but I would like to make a request that dovetails into the two previous council people's comments for upcoming work sessions. It really hinges on our retreat session. I think that was a super valuable time. Thinking back on it, that's a whole lot of stuff to digest. And I think it might be a good idea if we spent a little bit of time at a work session and see, maybe you or one of your staff could present in a short format way the key takeaways from the work session and what we are doing to actively pursue those. I mean, I know like the strategic planning that's in the works, but it'd be great to see where are we on that. Then, you know, there was discussion about public safety on the River Walk, public safety for parks, cleanliness for parks, and all of those things are cogs that work together with one another. As an example, you know, public safety in parks really can dovetail into tourism board makeover because we'll have money to fund that sort of thing, which dovetails into the new machine used to clean the river bottom to make that more or less prone to be used as illegal camping. I think it'd just be good to see where we're at with what the takeaway from the work session was and where we are at on each of those. That would be my request. And I have no reports on meetings that I've attended other than that, Mayor.
Okay. I have several items. One is, of course, as you know, I attended that Colorado Municipal League meeting a little week ago, and because of the information we received last week and tonight from Mr. Beasley, I think everybody understands what that's all about, and it's very, very concerning. Mr. Ruber and I also had a meeting with Comcast last week. I'll let you go ahead and report a little bit on that, will you?
Yeah.
You okay?
Mayor, I'd be happy to. So we did meet with Comcast and really got an assessment of their future updates. And so right now, they're reasonably confident that they're providing high-speed contemporary internet to the entirety of our municipal boundaries, which is great news. They're looking at deploying some upgrades to their system that would get us to a 2G network, which is 2 gig download speed, so super-high internet access by 2025. And then they have plans to get to a 10G network thereafter. So really excited to see that they're investing in our community. But I also want to make sure we acknowledge our other providers, which would be Lumen/Centrylink and then CCOM in our community as well. But the takeaway is there's some heavy investment on internet access here in our community. What they're looking for to partner with the city is there's outlying areas in the county that are underserved. Trinidad itself is not, by any stretch of the imagination, underserved. So they would like to maybe consider partnering with us on some grants. I think that's important for our growth and development. If there's areas that we identify that we might want to annex for business growth, economic development reasons, we want to make sure that they're served. And, you know, I think to the economic development question earlier, that's one of the things that I think is very important, is that we have promotional material that says, "If you want to build a data center here in Trinidad or do something that's in the tech industry, we can support that." So I think those are the conversations we'll continue with Comcast and other providers to make sure that we're up to snuff on where we need to be on growth and development. But good news, again, is that we have some very heavy investment in our community to provide good service to our residents and businesses.
And to tag on to that is, you know, one of the things that we've looked at is to whether we want to go out on our own and develop ourselves, but it seems like Comcast may be coming to the table. We do have that million dollars that we've set aside. If we don't use it, you know, there, we might go utilize that elsewhere because if we want to partner with Comcast, but that's a discussion that we'll have down the road.
Yeah.
So I think that's something we could look at.
Good.
You were... a couple of... you mentioned about businesses and stuff. Just to let everyone know, I did contact Linda from EcoTech last week, and they're still trying to find that funding, that gap funding that they're working on. And they're still very interested in trying to do something here in Trinidad. But I did have a discussion with her on that. Last Sunday, I talked with Carol Gibson from the Senior Citizen Center. And she had some concerns, and she was wondering if maybe we could provide some cameras up there. I'm not sure if she's talked to you about that already, because I guess one of the employees was working there, I guess, in the morning, and somebody came to the door and was shaking and trying to get in. And so anyway, she was wondering if we could maybe look at something that...
Yeah, we're looking into that, Mayor, that did make it back to me, and seeing what we can do on that front.
Someone else brought up this. I know that we were talking about doing some dredging at Central Park. Is that going to happen this summer?
So Mayor, where we're at right now on that is really it's the scum on the pond that really needs to be addressed, the dirty scum.
What did you call me?
You didn't say lawyer.
Yeah, that's right.
Not the guy's pocket.
Bob is looking at a new chemical treatment that I believe he's supposed to deploy this week or next week to start addressing that. But yes, we're committed to whatever it takes. That pond needs to be beautiful and amazing. And we have some money set aside for Central Park that you all have authorized, so thank you for that. And we want to make it just a great facility for our residents, so I will keep chipping away on that.
Yeah, just every so many years, you know, that growth just kind of starts to grow into about a third of the lake, so.
Exactly.
The other question I got from a citizen is, you know, of course, the concern is about, you know, the utility rates that we've raised. And the concern this one gentleman had was he had some elderly relatives, and how are they going to deal with it? And I said, "So, I guess the best way we can handle that is I know that we can subsidize anything, but I think maybe working with these elderly people if they get behind or if they want to do a scheduled payment on a monthly basis, that way it doesn't hit them all at one time." To me, I know that makes sense because that's what I do on a monthly basis. And it's the same, you know, month in, month out, so it's not a hardship. And I think that works real well. I know it works out well for me, and I think it might work out well for the elderly people. So I will tell him that the best thing to do is to, if you have a plan of that or a plan to do something like that, let me know. I can have him come down and talk to you and...
Mayor, I believe we already do payment plans, and then we also partner... And I apologize, Cheryl's not here, I can't remember off the top of my head, but there's at least one nonprofit that we partnered with to offer assistance as well. So they can reach out to our utilities department, and we can give them that information.
The other thing I want to mention is we have something coming on April the 24th, and we're going to be gone that day pretty much, so we're going to have to either postpone or delay or change that work session.
Okay, yeah, we'll work on that, Mayor. Mayor, that is when you and I are at CML under your anniversary.
Anything... I know one of the things that's... and I noticed this the other day, is the part of the... The parking downtown, we talked about striping the parking spaces. Anything on that?
Mayor, and I hate to keep delaying the conversation, but if you read the memo for the area-wide planning that we're going to be doing, parking is one of the subjects that they'll be looking at. So yes, we want to move forward on that as quickly as possible, but we'd like some analysis as part of that process. So we will keep working on that, and I will mention that to public works as well.
You know, actually, it was today, I went by over here across the river, and I noticed, actually, yesterday and today, and I noticed the city crew's working on cleaning up this area right across from us over here, and it's looking really, really nice.
It is.
Thank them for the work that they're doing over there, and I'm sure that's part of the continuing work through the river bottom. Is that correct?
It is. We actually have a grant for about $90,000 that's assisting us. And we've hired the Mile High Youth Corps to come in and assist us with this project, so it's a win-win. And we're trying to scramble to find every little piece of funding we can to clear out the river and make sure it's as beautiful as possible.
And on a real positive note, I got a phone call today from Renee Martinez, who is the representative to Senator Bennett. And we have been awarded another grant in the tune of $92,203. And that's for the natural gas distribution infrastructure, safety, and modernization grant application that we put out last, so we're going to get that money here shortly, so that's going to be good to see. And you were talking about trying to get Wally in here, but I think is Wally going to be gone already?
Wally, yes. Wally's leaving the city in the next week, I believe. And... but we're working on restructuring economic development. Our new development services director, Keely, has tremendous skills in that area, so we're looking at maybe getting her a coordinator to assist her on economic development. And so to Councilmember Shu's point, we would love to come to council in the near future and talk about our economic development initiatives and hear back from you on ways we can keep doing the best we can.
I also had another resident who mentioned that the boulevard, he was very pleased with the way the boulevard addition is coming around, I guess, the cleaning that they've done and all the work between done down there, so it was good to hear that. You know, and one of the things you're talking about, businesses, and one thing I've been talking about the last couple of years is we need to try to find what I call staple businesses in Trinidad. We need the clothing store, if you can get one. We can get maybe shoe stores. Those type of businesses will keep the leakage from leaving Trinidad. So I think that's something that we need to work on, like what you were talking about, Rick, in that regard. And if you would bear with me, I got the latest State House report. Went through it, circled a few items that are of interest. House Bill 231194, I'm not sure how this fits, but it's called Closed Landfills Remediation, Local Government Grants. They passed the House Transportation Housing Local Government Committee on Wednesday. The bill creates a program to assist local governments in remediating closed and rural landfills. And it's going to the Appropriations Committee, so I'm not sure if it's strictly for closures or for post-closures, so I'm not sure if that's something that maybe we need to look into, to check into that. The other item I recognize here is, of course, they're really big on, this is HB, House Bill 231233, Electrical Vehicle Charging Parking Requirements. One of the things that they want to do is any multifamily housing projects that go in, that they want to make sure that they have EV stations installed for that. And there's also the SB 23111 Public Employee Workplace Protections. And CML is in the opposed or manned position on that bill. What it does is they're asking to remove local governments from the bill. I haven't read the entire bill on that, so I'm not sure, so if you guys want to look into that, that's bill number, Senate Bill 23111. And this one here is House Bill 231132. It creates a task force to study the feasibility of creating increasing data sharing and communication between municipal courts, county and district courts. I'm not sure if you looked into that and read it. I haven't, Mayor, not yet, but I will. And like I said, that's House Bill 231132. There's also Senate Bill 23198, it's Clean Energy Plans. CML is opposed to the bill because it's requiring a lot of changes, requirements for municipal utilities. So there's some major problems there with that one. There's also HB 231169 concerning low-level offenses. The bill prohibits the use of arrests for low-level offenses, including petty offenses, municipal offenses, for which there's no comparable state offense. And there's some other language in there. The other thing is HB 1249, Reduced Justice Involvement For Young Children. CML is opposed to the bill because juveniles already have robust access to services through pre-trial diversion programs in municipal or juvenile courts. That's the basics of that one. But then there's also House Bill 231155, that's the Advisement Of Custodial Interrogation For Children. I think I brought that before about children, I guess, keeping children from having to testify. I guess that's basically what it boils down to. There's also HB 231182, Remote Access To Criminal Court Proceedings. That's going forward tomorrow, evidently. And House Bill 231192. It provides more protections for consumers. However, the bill will make it easier to file a construction defect lawsuit against developments... developers of single-family homes. That kind of goes against this 213 bill. It really does, from what I'm seeing.
If anything, increase housing costs.
It all goes... There's also a Campaign Practices For Municipal Elections bill that's coming forward too. That's House Bill 231245. That would be something that maybe I'd rather be wanting to look into. Those are the bills that I recognized that probably would pertain to us. With that, Mr. Ruber, what do you have?
Yeah, so dovetailing on the bills, there's just a couple others that Mr. Beasley has alluded to. There's House Bill 1255, and it's an anti-growth bill, and it basically prohibits local governments from adding any restrictions on residential growth. So there's certain communities in our states that have adopted ordinances that limit the number of housing units that can be permitted each year. It's not a concern for Trinidad. I don't think we have that or we're anti-growth or anything like that. But we are monitoring it from the standpoint of, again, the state regulating things that historically have been a matter of local control. And then there's also Senate Bill 166, which you may or may not have seen, and it imposes some very stringent requirements for municipalities on wildland protections as well. So I just want to mention, we're monitoring those, and we'll bring anything to you that we need to on those issues. I'm very happy to announce that Jared and I met with the Greenway Foundation today, and they're getting very close to having some great planning documents to present to you all for the River Walk. So we're finagling dates at this point, and it's looking like the first work session in May. We'll be able to bring something forward to you all, and again, it couldn't come sooner. We're really excited for that. We did meet with the SBA, Councilmember Ogultry and I, and they are very interested in doing more here in Trinidad, working with us, with the Chamber, and deploying some more resources for not only our existing businesses, but I think most importantly, would-be businesses, so they can offer assistance in developing business plans and really getting people to the point where they can have a successful thriving business. And I think they were really impressed with Trinidad. They hadn't spent much time here, and they were another example of, wow, we didn't realize how great it is here. So we love hearing that. And then lastly, I just wanted to give an update. I know several of you have asked, and Dana's been involved in these conversations and concerns, security at the Fox. So the alarm system, as of today, my understanding is it is fully deployed and active. And so we're just waiting to get the codes on the access and everything, but I know the crews were there this entire weekend to install that. So we're excited to get that back up and operational, so.
I did... Go ahead, Dana.
Happy.
Take us by caution for this, and I don't blame you.
We're going to keep it short and succinct.
She's very protective of the building for a good reason, and we appreciate that.
I did leak one item out. I talked to Dave Singer yesterday, or today, from C-Doc about the warmanship. And I've got a contact name with Amtrak that I need to call and see... And I've got a contact name with Amtrak that I need to call and see where they're at with it. You know, I'm not sure what the holdup is, but I'll find out.
Okay.
I'll let you guys know.
Can't we call it something that they don't?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That's right. That's funny, that's right. Mayor, council members, the only thing I wanted to report on, and I can't believe we haven't had a regular meeting since March 24th, but I don't believe we, we have, and that is the training for boards and commissions.
Yes.
And that was a, it was a rousing success, I think, thanks to this guy right here.
Who'd he?
Oh, yeah, and it was wonderful. And of course, the mayor was there, front row. And, but anyway, no, seriously, it was a, it was a wonderful event. And I hope that members of boards and commissions found it useful. And it was, it was just a really nice event, so, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was very thorough and, you know, some changes that come around even to council here through from that.
Yeah, somebody's done that before. Just kidding, no, it was very nice.
Anything else from council?
I have, I have a question. This is short and sweet. So I got the email from SERSA today. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm an insurance agent, if you guys.
No.
You didn't know that. And I really, I'm seeing rates on personal insurance go up extremely high and I'm really concerned about what kind of bill we're gonna get this year. Have you, has SERSA given you any indication what we're gonna? No.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I think it's gonna be a bomb when we get it. But anyway, it said in there something about our rates are high because of police liability. And it also says in there that they, they have training for police departments. Do we? Detective lay, do we? Does our PD?
Absolutely, annually, all of our officers.
Do they do the SERSA training?
We do some SERSA and we do police ones. And then we're required by state statute to have certain things annually, you know, so many hours.
I was just wondering because.
That's a good question.
Yeah. Thank you.
And one, one final thing is that I got this email, or not mail, but this mail from the Colorado Rail Passenger Association. There's a lot of movement on the new Fern Range rail district. And I think that we, it's time that we ask Mr. Lopez to come in and give us a report because there's a lot of things that are happening and let us know what's happening, what concerns us as well because it concerns the entire Fern Range. So if we can bring him in to give us an update as to what's happening with Amtrak.
I have one more, I can not just.
You could do that with a D.D.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, call roll, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
William Turner?
Yes.
Yes.
I know, I.